Okay, we're gonna go ahead and resume back for the Board of Commissioners meeting. You know how? We got Commissioner Hummer.
Okay.
All right, take care. Thank you, sir. Oh, we are coming to a meeting. Mm-hmm. Well, thank you for being here. Appreciative. Okay, well, we're gonna begin with our next public hearing item, which is RZ 1726 in District 2. And this is requesting a rezoning from RA to C3 for the property located on the east side of Mount Olive Road, north of Jonesboro Road. And we'll invite Mr. Gibbs up for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agriculture to C3 Highway Commercial. The future land use of the subject property is commercial, which actually supports the applicant's request. And based on initial communication between the, between staff and the applicant, the recommendation to the zoning advisory board on November 9th was denial of C3 and approval of C1, which is neighborhood commercial with four conditions, and the zoning advisory board recommended to the Board of Commissioners the same. This case was initially heard by the Board of Commissioners on February 20th, but the applicant requested that the item be tabled, which brings us to tonight. So after that, additional details provided to staff regarding the subject property. And the applicant's request for C3 is to allow for development of the property as a potential hotel. This use is only permitted in our C3 Highway Commercial zoning district. And having said that, the applicant has also expressed that a C3 zoning of the subject property for hotel use only would be agreeable. Staff has no objection to the subject property being rezoned to C3, limiting the C3 use to hotel only with the following conditions, and I'll read them for the record. Number one, the owner developer shall coordinate with, with Georgia Department of Transportation project manager to reduce conflicts with the future roadway improvement and preserve right-of-way for that Georgia Department of Transportation project. Number two, the site's access shall meet the minimum spacing requirements and shall be located such that it meets the minimum intersection sight distance requirements per the Georgia Department of Transportation design speed of this section of the roadway. Number three, a D-cell lane and an A-cell taper shall be placed on Mount Olive Road at the site's access point. And number four, the development shall comply with the design guidelines of the Highway Corridor Overlay District. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the Board before we begin the public hearing?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens.
Dante, Dan, you read one, two, three, and four. Is it different from what we have up here?
I, I am not sure exactly if it's different. It should be the same.
What, what do you have for number four?
The development shall comply with the highway, design guidelines of the Highway Corridor Overlay District.
Okay. Okay. And then it says, and shall provide a 10-foot sidewalk. That's still everything in the Highway Corridor Overlay District, right?
Design, yes. Design guidelines, yes.
Okay.
Other questions from the Board?
Yeah, I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
How many conditions did you have?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Okay. So you got the owner developer shall coordinate with GDOT, access shall meet spacing requirements, and shall be located such that it meets minimum intersection sight distance requirements?
Yes.
Uh, D-acceleration and lane acceleration lane? Highway corridor overlay?
Yes.
What about limiting the hotel use?
That was, I read that into the record, so that would need to be an additional condition if the Board of Commissioners-
So it would be five conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Clemens, can I clarify, is number four really, should number four really be two different conditions?
Yeah, that's-
The development shall comply with the Highway Corridor Overlay District standards, and then number five, the development shall provide 10-foot sidewalk? I think that-
Well, I have six. I have six that I was looking at.
Complying with the design standards of the Highway Corridor Overlay would include the sidewalk requirement?
Then I would suggest take that language out, because it just makes it look like that's the only condition that you expect compliance.
Right, exactly.
So... I would suggest have number four read, "The development shall comply with the Highway Corridor Overlay District standards," period.
And then with respect to the C3 zoning, hotel use only, that would, if, if the Board of Commissioners so decided to go that, that direction, that would need to be an additional condition.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, um, you had something, Commissioner Barham?
Dante, I'm looking at this on the map, and I'm just looking at it, and I'm, I'm just kinda wondering why it wasn't C3 to begin with?
To begin with, as far as the request from the applicant, or C3?
Why wasn't it resoned when the rest of that property was C3?
That question I, I don't have the answer to, other than it wasn't included with the request when the Henry Town Center property came through for rezoning back when it, when it was rezoned.
Commissioner Clemens?
Commissioner Barham, um, I'm familiar with the area just because I drive that back road all the time. You know where the target is, and just so that everybody else knows. So right where the target is, there's a side street where McDonough First Baptist is, and then it goes around, and there's a graveyard to the left, and it keeps going around. Everything on that right side, you can go into Marshalls and all, that little side area right there into the plaza. This is a little piece on that corner. Everything behind there is C3 because it goes with the rest of the plaza, but this piece, this little small piece was left out. I don't know if someone else owned it, or why they didn't, or they were waiting to get a better, bigger dollar before they sold it to the rest of that development there, but it is the only piece left in the entire area that's not C3. So, just so that you have a visual of where it is and what it is.
All right, other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, we will now begin the public hearing, and at this time, we will ask, or invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to please come forward. There will be a total of 10 minutes given to anyone wishing to speak in opposition. One more call, anyone wishing to speak in opposition. We will now grant time for those that would wish to speak in favor. There will be a total of 10 minutes granted to anyone wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, so thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, and Mistress. I'm Dale Hall, I'm with Falcon Design Consultants, speaking here on behalf of Southern Consulting LLC, and I might be able to add some light to some of the questions that were brought up a little earlier. On the right is the air photo of the area, and the parcel that we're talking about tonight is outlined in green. You really can't see it well, so I'll just outline it with my pencil right now and my pen. So as you see, that parcel does butt up to the Henry County Town Center. It's directly adjacent to that, and why it was not zoned yet, the property owner had had it for some time, all the property around it was zoned, and this just never came up at the time to have it zoned. You can see from the other diagram or drawing that I have, it's outlined in green right here, and is surrounded by approximately 171 acres of C3-zoned property. If you go north along Mount Olive Road, the closest C1 property is about a half a mile driving distance. The closest C1 property south and west of this is three quarters of a mile drive down Mount Olive to this portion here, which leaves you at this area over here, and then three quarters of a mile to this undeveloped area on the corner. Now, we understand there might have been some misunderstandings and some confusion going through earlier with the C1 application or request. This property has always been requested as being C3. We had, uh, you know, hotel use and individuals that we're talking with, so we are in agreement with the C3 hotel use only and with the conditions we heard this evening. The question I have, and the concern that I have, is having it be part of the highway overlay. Uh, the highway, and, and we're fine with the architectural guidelines for the building, but the highway overlay, as it presently states right now, stops just south of the property. This is the subject property. So, to implement a full highway overlay on this area seems a little bit arbitrary because this is already developed, this property's already developed, so it will be, and this is already zoned, so those conditions can't be placed on it. We would be putting that out like a sore thumb in the middle of all this already C3-zoned property. So it didn't seem to be, to make real sense to make that be part of the highway overlay with having 10-foot sidewalks from this portion to this portion on this small two-acre site when it doesn't connect to anything else. So again, we agree with the conditions, C3 zoning hotel use, and we agree with some of the hotel overlay. Of course, we want it to be architecturally sound, we want the landscaping, we want the parking lot to be good, but some of the other items in there, internal trails and all, just don't seem to fit for this parcel of land. If it connected to all the other areas, if it connected to property that would be developed under that overlay, which it's already built, then we'd be in full agreement. All the other conditions, we're fine with, it was great working with staff on that, except for we do have a concern and wish you would reconsider adopting or putting a condition that we would have to abide by the entire overlay district.
All right.
Do I deserve any questions if you have our time for questions?
Well, we're in the public hearing aspect of it, and we'll make a note of your question. So thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Calling again, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Well, thank you. Well, that concludes the public hearing, and we'll invite Mr. Gibbs back up and to also address the question that was just raised regarding the overlay district. Okay, Mr. Gibbs, you heard the last question regarding, or the statement regarding that condition.
Now, with respect to the overlay district, Mr. Hall is correct that this property is technically not within those boundaries. And earlier I stated that the condition would read or should read that it shall comply with the design guidelines. Um, it, it does make sense that 10-foot sidewalks at this location may not fit, just because it's not technically part of the overlay. But design guidelines to, to, to facilitate it actually kind of going and adding to and, and, and mirroring developments that will, that will come and that are there, that would suffice with meeting the intent of the overlay. And that's the whole premise behind it, meeting the, meeting the intent. But those properties that are actually in the overlay, they must comply with the entire overlay. So, um, thinking along the lines of just meeting the intent and this property technically not being in the overlay, that suffices.
All right, okay, questions? Commissioner Clemens?
Can the applicant come back up? Um, I'm very familiar with my district and the overlay areas. It's not our intent to ask you to do anything that you shouldn't be doing. I know that that road is being developed by GDOT. It's gonna be widened. The, um, the sidewalks are gonna be put in by the state already. So the design guidelines is what we were most concerned about, not necessarily the sidewalks. So we, we will be addressing that, and if the Board supports it, then we will be addressing that within the conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments from the Board? Commissioner Prince?
I'd just like to make a statement about the 10-foot sidewalks. Mr. Hall brings a very, very valid point. You're gonna have these sidewalks going from nowhere going to nowhere. And the, the lot itself is not very deep. You're already gonna be adding, taking away right-of-way. So, and with some other, respect to other projects, we've had some issues when we have future road widens coming to where we're requiring the property owner to basically do a bond to come back later and add the sidewalks, and here it just doesn't seem to make any sense. So I, I'm gonna, I agree with Mr. Hall's assessment on that, for what it's worth.
Other questions or comments from the Board?
I also agree.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the Board?
And I wanted to say about the design guidelines. Um, before, when you brought this before, we tabled it, I was back and forth on it and, and couldn't understand what was going on, because there's a church across the street, and we don't wanna put a hotel directly across from the church that's a, a, a brand or a style that is gonna cause us to have a residence in a hotel, residential situation in a hotel. So the guidelines are to make sure that it's upscale, that we get quality, if it becomes a hotel for this property. And then we had not had a conversation with the church about what's happening across the street from them. So this has given us ample time to look at the conditions, have those conversations with the community, and make sure there's something that they can embrace as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the Board? Here are nine. The floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the request for our, for the C3 zoning of this commercial property with the conditions listed as they are, with the change of number four, the developer shall comply with the design guidelines of the Highway Corridor Overlay District, and that we would add number six.
Number five.
Number five would be that this, uh, C3 use would be limited to a hotel, and number six, that the developer or owner shall comply with the, uh, well, that was a substantial amount of the overlay, that was the one that I was adding. So it's gonna be one, two, three, four, and five. Four being changed to substantial, um, design, and five would be the C3 use limited to hotel.
Okay, just so, just so I read it to the record correctly.
Okay.
Number four would be amended to read, "The development shall comply with the design guidelines of the Highway Corridor Overlay District." And number five, the, uh, the property shall, the C3 zoning shall be limited to hotel only.
Okay. Okay, we have a second, thank you. We have a first and a second. Further questions or comments?
It is required. The design, the design component of the overlay is required. The, the roadway of the sidewalks is not, but the architectural design of our overlay is required. The lighting, the sidewalks, I tried to get all of that in, but GDOT is going to be coming down that road, making that from a two-way lane to a four-way lane. That is our eastern, that is our western parallel connector.
All right, is that clear? Okay, other questions? All right.
Commissioner, just for clarity, I think Commissioner Wilson was asking about the technicality of the actual overlay, and that where this property is located. So technically, it's not within the boundary, but by, but, but by condition of this zoning, rezoning, it would be required to comply with the design guidelines of the overlay.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Well, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll now move into our public comments, and at this time, this is where we welcome our citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions that are not listed on the agenda. And all persons that have requested to speak were requested to sign up with the county clerk prior to the meeting, and each individual will be given five minutes to speak, up to five minutes. And again, we do ask that you please be respectful in your comments, and if you have i-issues regarding an individual, please address that with the individual, but we ask that you direct all of your comments to the Board of Commissioners. So at this time, we'll acknowledge our county clerk to identify how many public comments we have, so that we can begin in, in that order.
Yes, Madam Clark, we have, excuse me, Madam Chair, we have 10. Jim Joyner, Vicki Evans, Joe Hudgens, Jim Hudgel, March Butler, Don Cole, Larry Maury, David and Angela McFalls, Robert Dolman, and Carl Swenson.
Okay, well, we'll begin with the first three, and then we'll call the others, so that we can, again, allow everyone to relax, relax. Okay? And the first one again is Mr. Jim Joyner, did you say?
Yes, Jim Joyner.
All right, thank you. If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
Madam Chair, fellow Commissioners, I certainly appreciate this opportunity to speak with you in reference to some actions that have happened here recently. I just wanted to state that I've known Chief Willis nearly 30 years. She retired with an impeccable record from the City of Atlanta Fire Department. I talked with some of her fellow firemen up there, and they said that she was very knowledgeable and respected her leadership. When she came out of retirement to go with the City of Riverdale, I felt they were fortunate to get someone of her caliber to be their fire chief. When it was announced that she was coming to Henry County, I thought how extremely fortunate to have her lead our fire department. I talked with some of her fellow firemen here, and they said that she really looks out for the department and for us. I talked with two Commissioners about the unfortunate decision made to remove Chief Willis. They stated they could not discuss it because of legal issues. It was a decision of the county manager. I sat in those same seats y'all are sitting up there as District Commissioner and Chairman. Things have really changed. Back then, the county manager worked for the Board of Commissioners, not the other way around. Some of this sounds like someone testifying and keeps calling for the Fifth Amendment. They know they're guilty, everybody else knows they're guilty, but hoping if long enough time, this will pass and is going away. And this is not going away, and who knows about a better deal? You're elected Commissioners. The buck stops for y'all. You're going to have to do what's right and straighten out this mess.
Thank you. The next person, state your name and address for the records, please.
I'm Vicki Evans, 178 Oakland Boulevard, Stockbridge. Madam Chairman and Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is my first county commission meeting, and as I sat and listened, I, I don't understand a lot of what goes on, but I did listen to all the ands, ifs, and buts about rezoning and things like that. And it kept, it brought to mind to me, why does one person have the ability and so much power to remove a head of a department, especially the Department of, a Department of Public Safety Division such as the fire department? I've known Chief Willis for 35-plus years. We went to church together, we played softball together. She's been a mentor to me in, in some decisions that I've made throughout my life. She has the utmost integrity, moral, and Christian values of, of most anyone in this room today. I, like Mr. Joyner, have talked to a lot of folks. I've had extended family members who worked for the Atlanta Fire Department, and they praised Chief Willis's ability. I've got friends and acquaintances that had nothing but the utmost respect for her. I worked at Emory University for many years, and I've dealt with the Cab County Fire Marshals and Fire Department, and once again spoke very highly of her ability. Many of them trained under her. Something I found out recently, she really loves this county and works hard for this county. She was able to secure a $4.5 million grant, the SAFE grant, which was previously unattainable by this county. She's increased morale with the staff that she had. Again, I know firefighters from, from the county, have known quite a few for quite some time, and they, the, the morale was, had, was just upbeat. She made a difference. She's got new stations, there's new stations that have come on board since she's been here. A little bit that I know about Nish is, she was the first female battalion chief with the City of Atlanta. She was the first female lieutenant. Matter of fact, she was the first female everything within the City of Atlanta. She was the first Henry County fire, female fire chief. She's excelled everywhere she's been, but unfortunately, the citizens of Henry County will not get the opportunity to benefit from her training, her education, and her knowledge. In the latest news article, it states that the county is moving in a different direction, and that came, I believe, from the county manager's comments. Unfortunately, that direction is in the wrong direction.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address, please. Thank you for the record.
Hi, I'm Joe Hudgens. I live 604 Elliot Road, McDonough, Georgia. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been a citizen of Henry County for over 30 years, and I've known Chief Willis for even longer than that. It goes all the way back to when she first started in La Grange at the fire department, her first job as dispatcher. She and I were roommates, and I was in college, and my most stressful day was trying to figure out how to pass calculus. While she came home covered with soot and had been, you know, crawling through smoke-filled homes and, you know, all out. And I have two daughters who are in public service, and one is a police detective and one is a Black Hawk pilot in the US Army. And I've always told them, if you're gonna be a female in a job that's predominantly male, you can't just be good or average. You've got to be so good that there's no question about your qualifications when you go to apply for a job. And that's the, that's sort of the rule that Chief Willis has always lived by, because it wasn't good enough for her to just be a softball player. She had to be the catcher that threw you out at second. It wasn't good enough just to, you know, get a bachelor of science in, in, a bachelor's degree in fire science, she had to graduate summa cum laude. And it wasn't good enough just to be a 911 dispatcher, she wanted to rush into burning buildings. And I've seen her where her arms from, uh, shoulder to, to wrist were totally burned because she was trapped in a burning building, and, and the equipment that she had on literally melted on, on her body. So she's never asked anybody to do something that she wouldn't do herself. I, I know that. And when she said that she was applying for this job as, you know, fire chief, I thought, well, no, no problem, because I know that her qualifications are superior, and, you know, there wouldn't be no question about if she was qualified for the job. And being the Chatty Cathy that I am, every, after she was hired, every firefighter, every EMT that I ran into, and in my line of work, I run into a lot of public safety people, you know, I'm like, well, how do you like your new fire chief, you know, or you have a problem with it being a female or anything? To a person, they all loved her. I, I heard nothing but good things. And I, and, you know, I never said, I know her well, I just, it was a general question. And they all, you know, thought that she was, she was great, and I've known her, you know, for years, and, and I know the integrity that she has, so I wasn't surprised. What I was surprised was when I heard that she had been dismissed. So, you know, I'm thinking it, it must be something, there must be some big deal going on. So, when I was told that, that the reason given was that the county is moving in a different direction, and that was it, I, you know, that was, it, it was confusing to me. So, my question, my question is, for someone who has spent more than 40 years serving their country in the Air Force, and then almost 40 years of public service as a first responder, I feel like she needs, you know, and deserves and has earned more of an explanation than just, we're moving in a different direction. And I think the citizens of Henry County deserve to know, you know, what that direction is, and was Chief Willis given an opportunity to, to take the fire department in that direction. So at the very least, an explanation in more detail and specific than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you would state your name and address, please.
My name's Jim Hudgel. I live at 128 River Park Circle. Like to open up with a quote. Arnold J. Toynbee once said, "Human dignity is achieved in the field of ethics, and ethical achievement is measured by how much our actions are governed by love and compassion and not greed or malice." One of you up on that panel stood on my porch one day, you know who you are, and I made you promise me that you would look after my brothers and sisters, because I too am a fireman. I broke my back and neck in the line of duty February 2016. I'm a veteran of United States Navy. I've worked for FEMA and Homeland Security as a specialist in weapons of mass destruction for 10 years. I deployed the, the Trade Center site. They sent me and my fellow teammates out to find pieces of the space shuttle when it crashed coming in. Now, in all my years of service, I've seen good leaders, and I've seen bad leaders. And I'm telling y'all now, you've let the best leader I've ever come across go, and that's a shame. If it was something that she did that was salacious or whatever, you know, forcing, I'm gonna be on a state-run body even though I don't qualify for that state-run body anymore, then okay, fire. She did wrong. But I'm here to tell you right now, when I broke my back and neck, that lady came to my house to check on me. I wouldn't even want her hers. She insisted that they help us. She's, sits on the board of a program that helps guys like me that are injured in the line of duty, that she helped my family. She doesn't know me from Job. The guys that I know, we have the, what we call the Firehouse News Network, we all know everything, everybody's business everywhere, and I'm telling you right now, I have yet to hear- to hear a firehouse speak ill of this lady. I have yet to hear it. I'm a scary judge of character. I'm gonna tell you right now, hers is impeccable. Flat-out impeccable. You can't touch it. So you're willing to sit back, and there's a book, I don't know if you all like to read or not, but I look big and dumb, but I'm mildly educated. I can count to ten with my fingers. But there's a book called The Wisdom of Groups. When you hired her, she went through an interview panel. A group of people made that decision to hire her. But you let one run her out. And that's wrong. You say you want to take the county in a different direction? That's the quote that was in the paper? Well, what direction are you taking it? Because I've seen departments burnt to the ground by bad leadership. I've worked at a few of them. You want to take the county in a different direction? I'll run a poll past you real quick. How many female Asian fire chiefs are there in the United States of America? Anybody dare to guess? Anybody? You had one. You had like a huge thing going right here that you could have touted all over the damn country. Excuse me. But you all let it go. Right? 1978, she was the first smokdiver, first female smokdiver. Right? Her car's number two. This is the hardest training that there is. There are men my size that can't make it through it. She was number two. And why did we let it go? Because I'm gonna want this answer. I'm coming back for this answer. Because it's wrong that you fired this lady. I'm telling you right now, you all made a huge, huge mistake. A huge mistake. And I'll close with another quote. Winston Churchill also said that no matter what you do, even if you're by yourself, you should do it like the world's watching you, because we are.
Could we state your name and address for the records, please?
I'm Marge Butler. I have been a Henry County resident for twenty-five years at 202 Bradford Place in Stockbridge. My husband, my late husband and I have been very active with CERT and all the LEPC and all the citizen aspects of the first responders, and we've really enjoyed it. I was shocked and deeply saddened to hear and read about firing of Chief Willis with no explanation. She's outstanding individual who had managed and greatly improved the morale and productivity of the Fire Department. She has very high standards and is highly respectful and respected also by the firefighters. She has managed county funds with integrity and is a hard worker in the community and county leadership. In return for her dedication, the county leadership betrayed her for its own selfish and shallow reasons. I believe in an article, they stated that they wanted to go in a different direction. How do you know what direction a Fire Department should go? Have any of you ever laid down or possibly laid down your life to save another person?
Thank you. County clerk, will you call the next names, please?
The next name will be Don Cole.
And the one after that?
And then Larry Maury, and David and Angela McFalls, and Robert Dolman, and Carl Swenson.
If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
My name is Don Cole. I live in Dallas, Georgia. I am one of the members of the department that these nice people have talked about. I wanted to come down here in person and testify and vouch for what they're talking about. I am a twenty-five-year member of the fire service who's enjoyed Chief Willis as a boss, a mentor, and finally, as a friend. I was somewhat disturbed when I read in the news media that she was fired without cause because the leadership of the county decided to go take the department in a different direction. This is because they had already had someone that has the knowledge, skills, and abilities to do just that. She's spent her entire life turning the fire service in new direction. When I prepared to come down here tonight, I did my research. I looked up each one of y'all, found out a little bit about all of you, and I think if you'll think about your past and your careers, you can identify with a lot of what's going on. I know two of you were firefighters. I know three of you worked extensively with the youth. I know one of you worked for Georgia Power for many years as a corporate executive. When I looked at this, I thought about what the newspaper had said. Chief Willis has lived a life of new direction. She joined the Air Force, and she was one of the first females ever to receive combat training. I know a lot of y'all, some of y'all are veterans. You know what that means. You know what it means to do that. You know what it means to put your life on the line. I have a son, just got a boot camp in the Marine Corps a year and a half ago. I understand what that means. 1977, she joined the La Grange Fire Department. I didn't know she was a dispatcher. That was interesting to find out. Now I can mess with her about it. But she changed the department down there. She attended the Florida Smokdiver Class, where she managed to finish despite being beat with sticks in an attempt to discourage her from finishing. I've never been beat with sticks in my twenty-five-year career. I don't know if any of y'all have, but that means something to me. After she went there, she brought that curriculum back to Georgia, where she developed this Georgia Smokdiver curriculum. And he's right, she is number two. In 1980, she joined the Atlanta Fire Department. She was promoted to the promoted Fire Apparatus Operator, which is the driver of apparatus. She was assigned to Station Five in downtown Atlanta, where she helped develop the hazmat team, once again taking the department in a different direction. They talk about her being trapped inside of a building and getting burned. The reason she wasn't burned any worse is she had her turnout gear on before it was required to wear turnout gear, once again taking the department in a different direction. She was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, there again becoming the first female lieutenant in the department. She was appointed to the section chief of training, where she developed the recruitment manual, the first one we ever had. She developed the training for basic life support, EMTs, thus taking the department in a different direction. She developed NOMEX uniforms. If you go visit your fire stations today, the blue uniforms that you see, that's NOMEX uniforms. She developed them, taking the department in a different direction, the fire service in a different direction. She oversaw the implementation of the first BLS engines. She developed and oversaw the implementation of first ALS engines, advanced life support. She managed over nine hundred members of the department, eighty-six million dollars. Eighty-six million dollars is what she managed. She developed EMS turnout coats to protect the firefighters, once again taking the department in a different direction. She volunteers with the Gold Shield Foundation and the Three Hundred Club of Atlanta. The gentleman who came up and spoke about being hurt and injured, she's helped hundreds of firefighters, police officers, EMTs do that. After thirty-one years in her career, she decided to retire and be a grandmother. She got bored, she went to Riverdale to change that department. She came here, she changed your department. The last thing I want to say is that she's a member of the Standards and Training Council.
Your time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Your time has expired.
Four governors' people. You lost a gem.
You're out of order, sir. Your time has expired. Thank you. Okay, our next...
The board would like to finish with this last speaker.
Please come forward, Mr. Maury. If you would state your name and address for the records, please.
Larry Maury, Ethics and Government. For two years, I've been suggesting that we do something about this insurance that we got in the county, and I think this is a direct result of that insurance program that we have. He's twelve, and this was put together, if you look on the, when she makes copies for you, if you look on the back page, this was put together by probably as large a certified insurance person in Georgia. And he lists all the things that's what's wrong with our insurance program. And a good reason tonight is what we're going through right now. But I'm gonna leave that for a later date. You talked about bonding a while ago. The builder next to our school out yonder went broke. Those sidewalks, there was a bond that never got built, and now they don't know where the bond is or what happened to that. You may want to change that policy. A few weeks ago, we talked about semi-trucks being parked everywhere. Well, this week, every morning I get up and go to 483 Walker Drive, there's a semi-truck parked side of the highway at the crest of a hill in front of a daycare center. But you shouldn't say anything, because there's been a bus parked there for the last four Law goes by. I see them fifty times a day out there myself, but they still park there. The bus sits there. That's his parking spot. The service station I mentioned about the semis, he didn't have one. He had twenty-seven parked there this week, one day. If you'll come to 483 Walker, it's a little old two-lane road going by four schools. And if you'll go out there at night and sit, you'll find semis that are now cutting through because they're living over yonder. The semis are now using our two-lane roads and tearing them all to pieces. We don't learn very good. So I'm gonna leave that, I'm gonna quit saying anything, because y'all don't do nothing. Another thing, all I can do is make recommendations. If you don't listen to them, they don't do no good. 911. I've made four phone calls to 911. First thing they ask me is, what's your telephone number? Why don't you look on your, you recorded my phone number when I called. Why have we got to go through that? If it's an emergency, somebody needs help. The other day, I'm coming down I-75 on the southbound lane. These two boys drifting over three lanes of traffic, trying to tell that operator who still wanted to know my telephone number, I finally said, "Just forget it." That's the fourth time that's happened. Just forget it. They won't have to worry about me calling them no more. I won't call. The last thing I'm gonna mention is, you sure do need to train your police and fire protection when we have an accident, and they totally tie up traffic. And many times, while they sit out there and talk, and talk, and talk, and tie up, a lot of times, all lanes of traffic. There needs to be some kind of training put in place to teach traffic control when the accidents happen, because it's a disaster. And if you don't believe it, pay attention next time you see an accident, and you'll understand. In Atlanta, Georgia, a blue light can happen, and there'll be five wrecks, and it'll tie up traffic for thirty to forty-five minutes on I-75. And it's doing the same thing in our county as it does on I-75. Think about it.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
David McFalls, 175 Church Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board of Commissioner. I just want to say first of all, for taking time and allowing us to speak with you about our concerns. I stand behind the neighbor and my friend, Nish Willis. I would like to take a moment to read verbatim a short article about her career that the Fire Chief News Letter dated July 10, 2016. The new chief is Brenda Willis, a thirty-seven-year fire service veteran. She comes from Riverdale, where she was Fire Chief for four years. Before working in Riverdale, Willis was Deputy Fire Chief of Airport Operations with the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, where she worked her way through the ranks. She was one of the, she was one of the first twenty female firefighters hired by the City of Atlanta Fire Department. She also was the first female to serve on the department's hazardous material and technical rescue unit. From there, she became the first female fire officer, and then the first female chief officer in the department's history. Willis has a Bachelor's of Science in Fire Administration. She is an adjunct faculty member with the National Fire Academy in Edmondsburg, Maryland, and is called to teach classes throughout the United States. Willis was and is an adjunct instructor with the Cab County Technical College and is certified fire instructor for the Georgia State Fire Academy. Willis Henry's appointment is not without opposition. Some officers in the county Fire Department expressed their support at a recent Henry County Commission meeting. The interim Fire Chief Brad Johnson, Johnson has been with the department since 1998. Willis has seized a Fire Chief, Bill Lacy. He retired in December. As a citizen of Stockbridge, I was taken back and surprised when I heard the change in direction that the city manager stated as the reason for the termination for Chief Nish. As any concerned citizen, I wanted to know why. I asked review with other of my colleagues to understand that the position that Chief Nish had is an appointed position by the city manager. I was disturbed to read, though, the different accounts of what happened, with no real explanation in the media. I was expecting to hear that we, as a county, would practice best city manager practices. And give you a few examples. Recognize that you are different because when you're elected. Understand and respect the council members and their plan of governance. Take the role seriously, but not yourself. Appreciate the legitimate difference between the community perspective and the professional and technical perspective. Don't fall in the trap of feeling you are very special. Professional city managers will not play favorites. Be sensitive to the needs of other managers who sometimes tell you what you don't want to hear. It's about the majority, not the individual. Take the role to evaluate managers' performance seriously. Tolerance for organizational imperfections and people's mistakes. Does the City of Stockbridge want headlines like Atlanta had and Florida had Judge Rule cited in Atlanta Fire Chief Kelvin Conkrane firing not constitutional? Former Naples Fire Chief Steve McClery has filed a lawsuit over his firing last year. Both made national headlines. I want to thank Chief Nish for the fantastic job she has done her entire career. Your hard work and dedication has really helped this city. I believe the cities of Henry County knew this, know this, and they know that... and they know that you were trying to move this city forward by adding staff to fire trucks to make the job safer. All I can say is that, for the reasons for Chief Nish being terminated, needs to be made available. Unfortunately for the county, the path of this decision was made years ago with them changing the way hiring firing is done. It is not done by you guys, but it's done by the county manager. And there opened the door for the abuse that I see this happen.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
You bet. Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Bob Dolman, 2405 Lake Armada Drive, Hampton. This meeting started with a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I seek justice, the same justice that you spoke of. Like Chief Nish Willis, I am a proud veteran, having served in the United States Air Force. I served in the 547 Special Operations Training Squadron during the Vietnam-era war. Every now and then, we should stop and reflect on how much soldiers sacrificed during times of conflict while ordinary citizens like you continue with your daily routines, losing sight of those of us that make it possible for you to be where you are today. If anyone deserves justice for all or simple due process of the law is veterans. Who am I and why am I here? I have over 40 years of experience in all major functional areas of human resources management. I retired as vice president of Human Resources for a Fortune 100 company in 2007, and I served this county in a lesser role between 2014 and 2017. But it's not really about me tonight. I'm here to protest the firing of a fellow Air Force veteran, Nish Willis, and to encourage you to reinstate her as Henry County Fire Chief. Better still, you can make her county manager because she can do that job. When Chief Willis was hired, I was not part of the selection committee, but I recall Ms. Willis finishing in the top three. I inquired, "How did Brad Johnson do?" And I was told by a committee member that Johnson wasn't even in her league, that he didn't make the cut. And for some strange reason, he was handpicked and put above her as the assistant county manager, where he frustrated her daily. And he's frustrating staff right now. Go figure. We hired an exceptionally talented fire chief, and that's why I'm here tonight. After having worked closer with her for a year, I can unequivocally say she's a quick study. She's intelligent, has great IQ, and great emotional intelligence. She's strategic, has great operational execution and core competencies. She's skilled in leadership development, change management, organizational planning, and she's well-grounded. She's not full of herself. She doesn't run around the county asking people to kiss her ring, to kiss her feet, or you know where I'm going. She's ethical, she's fair, she's a good listener, she's collaborative, collaborative and a team player. I think these are some of the attributes that a fire chief should have and a county manager should have. Chief Willis is a victim of grave abuses of conscience and power. Always thought there had to be probable cause, evidence pointing to a crime, a lapse in ethics, neglect of duty, gross misconduct, or misappropriations of funds. In other words, there has to be extraordinary improprieties to fire someone at such a high level in any organization. From reports received, Chief Willis was repeatedly harassed by Johnson since he was named assistant county manager. And she registered those complaints with HR. However, she could not get a meeting with the county manager to discuss the issue. Now, where have I ever heard that before? I also asked, and I heard Johnson was angry at a point of using profanity because he was rightfully removed from the fireman pension fund list because he no longer was a fireman. The county manager, however, finagled, manipulated, cheated, forced it, engineered, and otherwise abused her power to put Johnson back in the fund, a move which the county manager should be fired herself, not the fire chief in opposition. I understand Georgia statutes do not allow for commissioners to interfere in operations of the county. And I see my time is running out, so I'm gonna skip down and say, "When have I heard this county manager say, 'I made a mistake, I misjudged the situation, I was wrong.'" Well, I recommended her for the job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I made a mistake.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
As a frequent flyer here, I'm Carl Swenson from Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. I want to start this off by saying, Mr. Holmes, thank you.
If you could please address the board. Thank you.
I am addressing the board. Okay. Mr. Holmes, thank you. And Mr. Prince, thank you for recusing yourselves because of a conflict of interest in the items number D and E. D and E, okay. And it should be noted, and it should go on the record, Mr. Jogstetter, that this vote for those two items should be null and void. Why? Because we had another conflict of interest here. Ms. Wood, you received campaign contributions from Mr. Welch. And yet, the Welch Law Firm was up here during the presentation. You did not recuse yourself. That is a serious breach of your fiduciary duties. And someone should hold you accountable for that. And that vote should be null and void because you did not have a quorum without your vote. Now, getting back to an issue that we're dealing with or dealt with the last meeting, having to do with child trafficking and human trafficking here in Henry County. I put this up here because this represents two different ways of approaching the trafficking. One is what happened here in Henry County, constituted catch and release. Why? Because the person was within the county. He was a professional here in the county. The second part is what happened out in Arizona, I believe it was. And that's how they do a normal arrest and how they proceed. And you can see that there were some major differences. The man that was arrested here was not even read his Miranda rights upon being arrested. He talked, admitted to a lot of stuff. But when they did finally give him his Miranda rights, he refused to say anything more and requested an attorney. For this, we have someone that is a potential, if not real, pedophile running loose in our county. Now, I don't know if any of you are even interested in this, but I am. Sherry, you said you were. You said we were gonna get some town hall, you said we were gonna get some town hall meetings. And I'm looking at you guys. When are we gonna get the town hall meetings? We got a real problem here. Serious problem. It's not, it's not just here. It's been going on for a long time. This book, uh-oh. This book here, The Franklin Cover-Up. I wish you could, I wish you could read this. I wish everybody here on the board would read this book because this explains exactly what's going on, not just here in this county, yes, all over the country. But this is a very, very serious issue. We need those town hall meetings because we need to get the people engaged in this. We need to get as many people on this as possible to eliminate this from happening here in our neighborhood. It's up to you. You are the ones that are supposed to protect, to serve. I need you to serve. The kids need you to serve. All the kids. Because we don't know who's gonna be the next victim. All we know for sure is that these people are running free in our community. And if they happen to be in a position of authority or within the government, they seem to be getting a pass. Now, if that doesn't get you mad, I'm sure the people that hear this will be getting mad. Righteous mad. Keep that in mind. If you don't take this serious, people will. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment section. All right, well, thank you. We're now moving to the approval of our minutes for the April 3 workshop meeting. Were there any revisions or changes to those minutes? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move into the commissioners' comments. And I'll look this way. Anyone have any comments? The only thing, I kind of would like our county attorney to address the recusal.
I said I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, can I allow him and then come back to you if that's okay?
I'd prefer to go first.
Okay, well, go ahead.
I just want to say, as commissioners and our responsibility as policymakers and our positions to enforce policies in this county, there's a Georgia statute that's out and that's a county policy that our county managers and our assistant, I guess our assistant county manager has the power to fire and hire staff without the recommendation or the input of the commissioners. And I've questioned that it was done before I got on board, and I would just like to publicly say it's a statute that I don't agree with. I believe that before the head of a department is fired, especially as significant as our public safety director, that the commissioners should have a vote and we should have a say-so. And I've discussed this with commissioners, and they said, "Well, we do have a say-so, but it still takes a vote to change anything." And with that being said, I just think that as a 25-year business owner, me personally, I've never supported firing at will. I know Department of Labor rules and regulations, and I think that we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure things are done right. So I'm hoping that in the future, we can look at this policy in the very near future and make some changes because it's a policy that I don't agree with. And I think that if we don't address having a say-so to the people that elect us, then we're gonna forever be held responsible for something that we should be responsible for. And so I just want to publicly make that statement. I know that I've been told that I don't need to say anything, but I just could not sit back and say nothing about this situation. So that's my comment. And you all can all be mad. But I mean, I have not, I have not hidden my position on this. I've talked to our county managers about my position on this, and I think that I have been very consistent as a commissioner that if I don't agree with it, I'm just not gonna go along with it. And so that's just my take on it.
Any other questions or comments from the board before I speak? Okay. Well, county attorney, I would like you to address two matters. One, can you speak to, I guess, the clarification about House Bill 554, which was just noted? And then I would like you to also just, you know, address the recusal issue that did come up during public comment, if you will.
Okay, I'm gonna pull up House Bill 554. Give me one second. I can tell you, while I pull it up, I don't want to get the language of it wrong. What that House bill says, and it's referred to a House bill with a number only until it's actually adopted by the legislature. It's now Georgia law number something. I don't know the number. But what that, what that provision did was clarified what had actually been county practice for as long as I can remember, that hiring decisions were made by the county manager. Hiring and firing decisions of department heads and other staff members falls upon the county manager. Specifically, House Bill 554 provides that, in the absence of the county manager, the Board of Commissioners can hire and fire department heads. But it suggests that while you do have a county manager, that those, it's kind of like an hourglass. Those decisions go through that little dot at the middle, which is the county manager. The Henry County Personnel Policy, which has been approved for a number of years, provides the same thing. It provides that the county manager makes final hiring and firing decisions of all employees other than those that work directly for the board, the county manager, county attorney, the county clerk, your executive assistant. There may be a couple of others I don't remember right now. It contemplates, both of those contemplate that those decisions are made by the county manager. And as relates to department heads and division directors, unlike, and appointed official, appointed positions, unlike rank-and-file employees, the department heads, division directors, and appointed employees are not entitled to a forecause determination and hearings. And that's, that's how Henry County has existed. That's how personnel decisions have been made for, for as long as I've been associated in any way with the county. You know, and I've said this before, and I know Sherry doesn't mind me saying this. Ultimately, this board has input in those decisions through its evaluation of your county manager. If you disagree with the decisions the county manager has made, you take that out on the county manager. And that's, that's how you do today have influence over it. Obviously, if the board wants it to be different, then it can, that can be achieved. You do have the right to change what's set forth in House Bill 554. It's a complicated procedure, but it can be done. And if that's the wish of the board, it could certainly be done. We would have to exercise our home rule powers. It would take some time and some energy, but it can be accomplished. So I hope that answers that question for the board. As relates recusal in zoning matters, Georgia has a specific statute that deals with when a commissioner must recuse himself in a zoning matter. And what that statute is, OCGA 3667A2, if anybody wants to jot it down for reference. It calls for recusal under really three circumstances. If any of you have an interest in the property being rezoned. If you own a portion of the property, you hold a loan on the property, you're a member of a company that owns the property. If you have that type of a property interest in the property affected by the rezoning decision, you should, you are required by law to recuse yourself. Arguably, that would include the property next door. If it would, if a rezoning of this property would affect you next door, then you should recuse yourself. In fact, the law requires you to recuse yourself. The next element is if you have a financial interest in the business that's seeking the rezoning. So if you are a, if it's a corporation and you own stock and you have a membership interest, you have any financial interest in the company that's getting the rezoning. And I think that would extend to people who are, who are directly or indirectly own a financial interest. Maybe you've got a contingent fee, a real estate commission or something like that through the property. Then you are required to recuse yourself. The next element is if a family member has one of those conditions. And that family member is, is really defined fairly broadly. It's a husband, wife, minor child. It doesn't reach out to cousins and distant relationships like that, but it's really your immediate family. And those are the three classifications that require you to disclose yourself. Georgia law does not require recusal based upon campaign contributions. In fact, Georgia law contemplates that people that appear before you for camp- In fact, Georgia law contemplates that people that appear before you for rezoning decisions that have made campaign contributions will do that. And that requirement exists in a provision of law that requires an applicant to disclose if they've made campaign contributions. And because it's required to be disclosed, it's not required to be recused. And that's Georgia law on recusal in zoning cases. I would suggest that oftentimes commissioners recuse themselves in zonings when they probably don't hit one of those three things. And I think that's commendable. I think if you feel you're too close to the decision, I think it's appropriate to recuse yourself. But the law does not require recusal based on campaign contributions. It does require the disclosure of campaign contributions. And that's a public disclosure. It's contained within the zoning application and it's part of our zoning package, in fact. And it is required every time a zoning application is filed. It's a one-page form. It's filled out, it's signed, and I think it's notarized. I think it's done under oath. And the fact that that requirement is in the law is what tells us that campaign contributions by themselves don't require recusal. They certainly subject you to political scrutiny. And that's, I think that's natural. People look at who made campaign contributions and how you vote in response to those campaign contributions. But in this instance, the fact that a lawyer representing a property owner has made campaign contributions would not, as a matter of law, require recusal.
All right, Commissioner Holmes?
In the past, I mean, I've served on this board for about, it's been going on eight years now. And it's always been common practice for any position in the county that serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, that that person that's serving in that position approach all the commissioners and get their take on if it's appropriate to make any kind of move. Specifically, the firing of a high-profile position in the county. Given that fact, you know, I think, and everybody knows, I think this firing was a huge mistake. I served on the Jima Board and when Nish got hired, I heard all good reviews, no bad reviews from FBI to every public safety leader in the state of Georgia. And today, I still really don't know why Nish was fired. In the future, I think if we plan on continuing to make moves like this, I think whatever person is serving in these leadership positions, they need to poll each commissioner. And I think before you make a firing, such as the firing of Chief Nish, that you probably want to have unanimous support from the Board of Commissioners, or we're going to end up in a situation like this. So I just want to just make that comment. And hopefully, the board, the county manager, we can reevaluate this decision if the board chooses and make things and correct things. That's why I'm going to leave it there.
Okay, Commissioner Clements?
And I would just like to say, Patrick, you stated that we have the right to change House Bill 554.
That's correct.
That process won't come back up until January next year, when I guess they go back into session, that we can even address that.
Actually, you can, this board can change that provision without waiting on the legislature.
So I remember having a conversation, and I'm being transparent about this because someone asked me about it, having a conversations with you about having this decision investigated. Having Brad and Sherry and Doris investigate it based on this decision. And you said that I had, you had to speak to the rest of the board and make sure that I had everybody's agreement, or at least a majority, to do that. And I sent another email to you saying, what's the wish of the board? And nothing happened. So even if that's not changed, we still should be able to know why if something happens. And it's just not about the firing, but even the moves that are being made. I mean, Rod has been moved, a lot of people have been moved. Who's next? And so I do want to have, and maybe we don't have it, and maybe no other commissioners want to have say-so or know something. But when I have to answer to my constituents, I want to be able to answer and stand my ground for whatever I answer. And I think that we should have that, right?
And so you'll know, the way you can change that provision in that law is you would do it by ordinance, but you can't do it like you do every other ordinance. It requires, and I didn't pull the law before the meeting about this, but it requires, I think it has to go in front of the board twice. Your typical ordinance only has to go in front of the board once. You have to publish a notice in the paper. There's a couple of other requirements. We had to do this on, it was actually a fairly minor, what one would think it was a revision to our purchasing ordinance about two years ago. Because that portion of the purchasing ordinance was created by local legislation, we had to jump through those extra hoops. And rather than it just being something that's put on the agenda and shows up in about, you know, a month and a half or two months, it would take a few months to achieve. And if that's the board's wishes, we can certainly do that. We can certainly work towards doing that. And, you know, we'd need some input about exactly what will it look like if that's what the board wishes to do. But we could certainly.
I don't think the county manager made this decision on her own. I mean, what county manager would if you served for six people? Somebody up here knew that the county manager was about to make that decision before it was communicated to the rest of the board. So I don't believe that she went out there by herself and did this. So, you know, the commissioner or commissioners who supported this move should just say, hey, look, we supported this move and Sherry, we got your back. We know you moved forward with our approval and we got your back, instead of just throwing her under the bus.
Well, let me say, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I want to, I'll wait till you finish, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, I'm done.
Okay. I am open to us reviewing our current ordinance on how things are done. That is a kind of rule of conduct for the board as it relates to the commissioners, to the county management, to the staff, to the employees. I, as a board member, believe that we hire a county manager to operate this county. And I highly respect Sherry. Now, do we agree with everything? No, sir. I will tell you, no, ma'am, we do not agree. But I will tell you, I have the highest respect for her and what she is doing for this county. Do I agree with everything? No, again, I don't. But again, if we take Sherry out of the equation and just speak about the county manager's role, what is the function of the county manager and what is the function of the Board of Commissioners? That is what we are dealing with right now. And as it relates to this decision regarding the termination or the release of Chief Willis, this is a policy that we've got to have some conversation about. Because again, there are some specific guidelines of the role of the Board of Commissioners and there's a specific guidelines on the role of the county manager. There are also some rules of conduct. And I will tell you, at the end of the day, yes, we definitely, as a Board of Commissioners, with each other, with the county manager and the county management team, we've got to have better communications, period. So I'm open for reviewing the process or the law or the bill. But at the same time, right now, we are under an ordinance or a law that says that we have a county manager and we've all been in county commissioners' training, there's different ways by which different counties actually work with their county manager. And if we really wanted to revisit that, I'm open to that.
Well, this is, I don't think this is about Sherry, so I want to clear that up. I specifically talked about us being policymakers. And if policies are not good, we sit here and change them all the time. We just changed a whole lot of zoning policies tonight. So this was, you know, when I commented, I talked about policies. And I want to say this is not about Sherry. So I want to make sure that, you know, that, Sherry, you understand that.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson?
If I recall, all six commissioners were informed at the same time and nobody said a word.
That's not true.
That's not true. Well, we're getting into executive session, so wait it just a moment. I'm going to look to the county attorney, because we're talking about executive session discussions. And I'm just wanting to know, is this appropriate or not? And if so, we will move forward.
It's certainly, no lawyer will ever advise you to share what was discussed in executive session. But that information, once it's given to you, is yours. If you wish to share it, you can share it. There are some risks that you take when you share it, but the information belongs to you. You could, you know, if you disclose a legally privileged matter without the consent of the rest of the board, you could subject yourself to liability. There's, it's never a great idea to disclose what was discussed in executive session. If we're going to discuss, if we're going to disclose those things, let's just do it in public.
All right, Commissioner Wilson has the floor and then we'll come to Commissioner Prince. So are you having any other questions or comments?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Prince.
Patrick? I've seen this done before. I've been doing this a minute. Where the board can vote to discuss what was discussed in executive session?
You can. I mean, the information belongs to you. You can certainly do that. You can release minutes. I mean, I think it's a dangerous step to take when you start picking and choosing which things to release and which not to release. I think if you want to, if you want to get out of having executive session, you do everything in public. If it's worthy of executive session, I think the board ought to make a decision whether to keep it there or not. But yes, I think you could, certainly, if you so choose, you may do that. It makes it more difficult, especially if I'm giving you legal advice, to give you legal advice, because every other client in the world is entitled to confidentiality. And if we bust that, then you may not hear things from me that I need you to hear. And, you know, there's a concern. Now, I don't think this involves legally privileged discussions, because I don't think we had any legally privileged discussion. I mean, it's a different, it's a different basis for executive session. But are you going to get into the habit of talking about every employee that you discuss in executive session in public? And part of the reason that the exemption, part of the reason that the law allows you to discuss employment matters in executive session, I would suggest, is to protect the employee, to keep some things discussed about employee from being put under the microscope of the public. And I understand there's a number of people that want to hear this, but there is an element of respect for that employee to keep those conversations private. But yes, if this board decides to release the information, it belongs to you, you have the right to do so.
I'm going to just handle this delicately then. I'm going to try to remain calm here. I made my objection known prior to the firing of Chief Willis, not after. Perhaps had others done the same, this situation would have ended slightly different. It bothers me when we come back after the fact and talk about why decisions were made when a minority of commissioners speak up. And that's delicately as I can say that.
It's known prior to it happening as well.
Discussing what happened there, I'm just.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next segment and allow the county manager to make comments.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members. I originally didn't have any comments. And just in light of some of the comments that were made tonight, I'm certainly not going to discuss, as I've made it known to every person that's inquired, a personnel matter out of respect for Chief Willis. I want everyone to know that on March 22nd of last year, this board elected me or appointed me as the county manager. And one of the things the board charged me with was being a strong county manager, assessing the needs of this organization, and making some tough choices. I came to the board on numerous occasions about directions that I was headed in in terms of our organization. We've talked about some cultural changes within our organization. And as the manager, that's what I'm charged with doing. Obviously, there's been some comments made tonight regarding a full-blown investigation and I welcome that. I will provide any and all information that the board wants to review. We can discuss it, we can go through it. I have no objection to that. But I will tell you that my decision to move in a different direction was because of my position as the manager. Again, I do not want to discuss the personnel matter, but I will be more than happy to discuss with any board member that has any specific questions, the rationale behind why decisions have been made. Keep in mind, on that evening in which we had a conversation, there were several organizational changes made. So it was not just something that was done haphazardly. I wasn't coerced to do it. It was based on one year of assessment within this organization. And so I just want the board to be aware of that. And again, if there's any questions or concerns, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have. And that's all the comments that I have this evening.
Thank you. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events, on April 24th at 9:00 a.m., there will be a workshop meeting. And on May 1st at 9:00 a.m. is our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time, we've reached the end of our agenda and call for a motion regarding adjournment.
To move.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you and thank you all for participating in today's Board of Commissioners meeting.